And finally, Councilmember Nancy Florine has been chosen to chair the regional kickoff party for the Key to the Cure, a national three-day shopping event designed to raise funds for cancer research and treatment. This area's event will be held at Saks Fifth Avenue in Chevy Chase.
Women, and particularly women in Montgomery County, are hit really hard by breast cancer. So, right now, this week, Suburban is partnering with Saks Fifth Avenue to kick off really a national program of, to raise money for women's cancer research. So, they're having a big event this week. There's gonna be lots of fun. I'm bringing a lot of breast cancer survivors from Rockville to come and enjoy the festivities and hopefully raise some dollars for what's a really important health initiative.
Well, that does it for this edition of County Report this week. Be sure to tune in again next week for a look at what's going on inside Montgomery County. Thanks for watching.
I call this meeting to the City Council to order. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Schults.
Here.
It's kinda like just-in-time inventory.
Just-in-time inventory.
Um, I wanted to note that we have one additional agenda item this evening that will be the last work session item for the evening, which is visiting the question that Councilmember Clay raised about whether there needed to be a policy discussion or decision about reimbursement for certain phone expenses. So, that is the last item. And just point out that for upcoming agendas, next Monday, October 31st, there will be no council meeting. The council will be at the Maryland Legislature Legislative Conference. The following Monday, November 7th, is the night before the election, and there will be no council meeting so that the clerk and her crew can get everything ready for the election the next day, and we don't make her stay up until all hours and then come in here and do things and come back in early in the morning. So, there's usually never a meeting on the night before the election, and we will continue that. Then, Tuesday, November 8th, is Election Day, and the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the following day, Wednesday, November 9th, there will be a brief city council meeting to receive the results of the election and to certify those election results. And then, the next, probably the next meeting of the city council will be Monday, November 21st, which will be the inaugural meeting of the new council and the final meeting of the old council. So, that's just what's coming up in, basically, in November.
Is there a council comments period on the 21st for exiting council members?
Yes, there is.
Great.
And anybody who would like to make extended comments during that time is welcome to do so. That's the right time to do it. And let me also add that there's one additional item on this evening's agenda, which is that there's a mayoral proclamation, and we will do that right after adoption of minutes and before our regular meeting agenda. So, we're now to the public comment period, and if anybody would like to make any comment on anything not on our regular meeting agenda, if you'd like to come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
I'm Michelle Morgan, and I'm representing Main Street Tacoma Design Committee tonight, and we just want to thank you. The cleanup of downtown was really marvelous, Main Street, from the junction to, and we wanna commend especially Public Works with a special thanks to Mike Welsh and his group. I got a lot of comments because people thought I did it, because I work around town a little. And I wanna be sure that particularly good looks was not due to me because I can't keep up anymore. I'm getting old. And I wanna be sure that Public Works is commended because I personally received comments from people who know I've worked downtown on how good the town looked for the street festival. And one of the examples is we had our cleanup day for Main Street last weekend. Two people came from Rockville to do dirty work for us here. And the reason they came is because their family had chosen to come to the street festival. They'd never been to Tacoma Park. They came to our street festival. They were so charmed, I'm told, by Tacoma Park, by the flowers and the trees and the shops and our downtown, that they went online and signed up and showed up and did dirty work for us here from Rockville. I've had groups come from Germantown. I did have one volunteer from Burtonsville also. And they come here because they like to be here. And I really want the city staff, if you could acknowledge them, that their work counts in ways that they maybe don't always know. And the people that come here, we're hoping will also have lunch and buy a gift for somebody and maybe move here someday, because they're the kind of people we just love, because they like us. So, thank you. We are all very grateful, and please extend that.
We will be sure to do that, and thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
That's very pleasant to hear.
Me too.
Hello? My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, your official peace delegate. Glad to be back out of the hospital. You know, I had a compound tib-pit fracture in my left leg and had to put a titanium rod in. Was in the hospital for about a month counting rehab. And I wanna thank Suburban Hospital and the paramedics for everything they did, the quick response they got, the courteous treatment. I wanna thank Benedicta, who was there to help me out when I fell. And I also wanna thank Sandra's Nursing, and they came and they got me another nurse. Her name is Dana. She works twelve, almost 12 hours a day now, 11 hours a day, Monday through Friday. And she's such a wonderful person. She makes my day go by wonderful. And I wanna also thank everybody who's visited me. I wanna thank Terry Siemens, who's kept in contact with me and who announced it when I was sick to let people know where I was. And yes, it was a very serious injury. I could've lost my leg or my life, or both. But I wanna thank everybody for the help I've gotten, the cheerful and the friendly response I've gotten, and the quick response. Without that, I would've been in trouble. See, what a compound fracture is, is you lose a lot of blood, and the bone just rips right through the skin. So, I had my tibia and fibula rip right through the skin, and they were able to fix that with a rod. But, and also, I wanna encourage everybody to come out and vote. I'll be down at the polls. I had just gotten out of the hospital, and my peace activities mean so much to me, and voting means so much to me. I'll be down at the polls. If I'm not in the hospital, I'll be at the polls voting, and I'll be out front with people like I am every year at the peace sign. And I was down at the occupation yesterday down at DC, the demonstrations. I encourage everybody to go down there and take part in that. They got tents down there, and they got everything. They got a food line up there. It's going good. And the third thing I wanna bring up is, I want you people to be aware of, we're getting a proclamation around now. My friend should've been here a little while ago, but apparently he's either later he couldn't make it. You know, but he's got some paperwork that he wants to give you people. We're trying to get a proclamation signed so that we will not make the same mistake that the county council made with Lockheed, Lockheed Martin. They have sold out to us. Mr. Leventhal had backed down and let Lockheed have their way. You know, and Lockheed is now gonna be getting more power in Montgomery County. And I'm trying to, we're trying to get a proclamation signed that we will not put up with that. We will stand up and fight. We will not let Tacoma Park be taken over by these implements of the war machine. We cannot allow that to happen. Now, he's got some paper coming in, you know, telling about the proclamation. I wish I could read, because I'd be able to read it to you. But we are trying our damnedest to keep the peace movement going, to keep the war machine down, to keep everybody healthy, wealthy, and wise. Thank you very much. Remember, everybody out there, be careful. Don't fall, don't trip, don't get hurt. We need you people out there. Okay, thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, and we're glad to see you back.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. Good to be the peace delegate.
Can we make a comment?
Sure.
Okay. This is my first time at a city council meeting. My sister Alex is a Tacoma Park resident, and she also is a, she also has pulmonary hypertension. It's a disease.
Ooh, ooh, ooh.
Me.
Yes, but you wanna wait till we do the proclamation?
Would we be able to make a comment at that time?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much for putting it on the agenda then.
Okay. Thanks. We'll get to it very shortly.
Okay, we won't reveal the secret.
Okay, anybody else have a public comment? Okay, council comments. Councilmember Schultz.
Well, first of all, I want to say welcome back to Pat Lovelace. I just, I am so impressed by your survivability skills, sort of the unsinkable Molly Brown. And I'm proud of what you've done and what you continue to try to do. Some of the adversity you have faced would have deterred most people long ago from community participation. I also want to remind people in my ward, Ward 6, about the election, because we have a campaign contest there, and it's important for people to understand who are used to voting at the recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue, that this election on November 8th is not at the recreation center. It is here in this building on Maple Avenue, adjacent to the city's library. I've had a number of people who I've talked to when I've been going door-to-door around the community get confused about that. Couple sort of community housekeeping things that I wanna raise. I did send a question to the Department of Public Works today about the possibility or when, to find out when Ward 6 is going to get trash cans installed by the Department of Public Works, which were approved in the 2012 budget, and Ms. Braithwaite's gonna get back to me on that. I think we're due for about three sets of trash cans to be placed in the, in Ward 6 to help with the trash that we get in various places. And I will get back to you, Darrell, with regard to possible locations. In that regard, I also want to pose a question, sort of at this point rhetorical, because I don't expect anybody to have an answer, but with the success of the two traffic circles on Wildwood Drive that were installed earlier this year and completed, it's been, the idea has come up by more than one resident about the possibility, physical possibility of putting a large planter in the center of each circle to make them more visible in the wintertime and to make them more visible at night. People that live adjacent to them said that, notwithstanding how long they've been there and the paint around the perimeter of the circle, that sometimes people still don't realize there's a circle there until they've gotten to the other side. And I thought it might help beautify without costing the city a lot of money, and I think if we could do something like that, then the New Hampshire Garden Civic Association would want and probably should be required to commit to maintaining those planters, to go out and weed them and water them so that it is not an additional burden to the garden division of the Department of Public Works. It's just an idea. I'm not advocating it at this time, but it'd be curious to sort of see if that could be done. And the other thing I wanna, finally, the last thing I wanna mention is another kind of small thing, but in going door-to-door, I noticed that there's an awful lot of houses that whose number, house number, is just either invisible or so barely visible that you can't even read the house number until you're practically at the doorstep. And I wanna remind people that the house number is vital for emergency services, for the police, for the ambulance, for the fire department, so that they don't sort of have to go down the street and say, "Well, let's see, must be, if this is such-and-such a number, then that house must be that number," and try to do a guessing game when seconds count. I think it'll, it's just good common sense to make sure that our house numbers are visible, well-visible in the daytime and have some light on them in the nighttime so that, for the reasons I just stated, I won't go on with it, but I encourage people to do that, and I'd like to see the, if the city can do anything to encourage, through maybe some jaw-boning tactics, property owners to do a better job of identifying their house numbers. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
Well, since this is our last regular meeting, I of course have to share a California story.
Thank you.
So, here's my, here's my thing. In the town where I grew up, the Boy Scouts came by every couple of years, and they painted the house numbers on the curb in reflective paint per the specifications of the city. They did every single house in the city, and then people who wanted to made donations to the Bray Scout troop. And they made a fair amount of money, and the boys learned how to do the work, and it was, it was a good thing, and it helped with identifying the houses. I would like to remind folks that there's a party at my house on Saturday night. It's happening at the end of the evening, from 6:00 until 10:00. I have a live band. Ms. Friedrich is gonna be there, playing. And everyone's welcome. It's potluck, but I always have a lot of burgers and hot dogs and veggie food and stuff for the teenagers who come, and kids are very welcome. It's probably the most kid-friendly of the house parties, I think, in the city. We have a good time. So, I encourage folks who live in Ward 2 area or would like to come on by to stop by. You're certainly welcome. Somebody asked me if it was a campaign opportunity. It's actually, it's my party. It's all about me. No. It's, it's really, it's all about the neighbors getting together and getting to know each other. So, no accosting people with cheerleading costumes or giant campaign signs or anything like that. It's just for you to come, have a good time, get to know the folks in the community, good place for the kids to hang out that evening. It is also the same night as the Boy Scout Pancake Supper, so from 4:00 to 8:00, you can stop by first at the Presbyterian Church and have dinner with the Boy Scouts, and then head on over to my house. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I had a really nice opportunity to go to Rome. My wife works for a UN agency that's headquartered in Rome, and she goes there quite regularly. And I've only managed to go one other time in like six or seven years that she's been doing this. So, we went and had a wonderful time. Thank you very much. And I make one observation about Italy and Rome, which is that they spend a fair amount of money on the city. So, there's a crew cleaning out, you know, cleaning every night, and, you know, it's a huge city with lots of tourists and so on who drop their trash everywhere. Sorry, Steve. But the city makes a big effort, and it made me think of how proud I am of Tacoma Park, which doesn't get out there every night to clean the, clean it, but it doesn't, because it doesn't have to, but the residents of Tacoma Park make a lot of effort to make sure that their city looks, looks good and presentable. And I don't wanna repeat the house number thing, but I, too, had the same experience of, you know, trying to figure out what house I was at. So, I, too, urge folks to, you know, make sure your house number is visible from the street so folks can see it. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'll just say that tomorrow night at, in the Pinecrest community, at the VFW on Orchard and Fourth, there'll be a Ward 3 debate, candidate debate, at 7:00. I encourage people to go if they're in Ward 3 to see the, the debate for the council seat. And that's it.
Councilmember Wright.
Thanks. I also wanna encourage people to come out and vote in the coming election. Some of us have uncontested races in our wards, and there's an uncontested mayor's race, but the least we can do in those situations is come out and vote and show our support for the candidate who's willing to spend significant time on the city's behalf for what's basically a volunteer role. You do get paid a small amount, but I do think we should, we should show support to those individuals anyway. The second item I just wanted to comment on is the multiple electrical poles or utility poles in the Penn neighborhood. Thanks to the Public Works Director, we're making some progress on that. Pepco's completed their portion of the project, and our District 20 delegation has been very helpful in pressuring the other utility companies, Verizon, Comcast, and RCN to now move their lines, so hopefully we'll be getting some progress on that soon. The next thing I wanted to just point out is something related to the debate that we had here, and this isn't a criticism of Barry Howard, but more there was something that was misstated, which I thought was, there were many things that were misstated during the debate. I do have to say mainly by candidates who are non-incumbents, probably because they don't know the issues quite as well. But there was one in particular that I thought was just wrong and should be corrected, not as a reflection on Mr. Howard, but more a reflection on the mayor in a positive way, which was, there was a statement that the replacement of the highly user revenue that we got back was due to the city manager's lobbying efforts, and that was really in large part due to the mayor's lobbying efforts and a few other council members, or predominantly the mayor, and we owe the service for that to the mayor, not to the city manager. So, I just wanted to correct that in accuracy. Lastly, I am kinda sad I'm not running again, but I did get an opportunity to walk around and campaign for somebody. I won't use the dais to say who that was, but it was great fun. It was not my ward to do some door-knocking and let drop, and my daughter, seven-year-old daughter, Aviva, joined me for much of that. One of the things I did notice, you know, I've done a lot of that in my ward. It is one of the highest-income wards, if not the highest-income ward in the city. And in the other ward, I noticed the kind of stark difference between some individuals who take really good care of their house, houses, and some individuals who don't, and just the need for greater code enforcement, but also probably resources as well. And so, I'm glad that we approved the CDGB money of the partnership with that organization. I'm forgetting the name of, but basically to do renovation on lower-income individuals' houses, because it was pretty stark to me. Some were greatly maintained, and some were definitely need some code enforcement and resources. And then, lastly, just wanna remind people that Recreation Department's Halloween events are on the 29th, which is Saturday before Halloween. There's a wonderful costume contest. It starts with a canine costume contest at 3:00 p.m. on the 29th, then 5:00 p.m. is kids and adults, too, all be there in costume. And then, after that, there's a parade, and then an announcement of the winners down at, I think, Piney Ranch Elementary. And that parade and the costume contest all starts up in Old Town, right at Laurel and Carroll Avenue.
Are you willing to say what your costume will be?
I won't say, but I will say it'll be shocking.
Shocking.
And it'll be no surprise to anybody, since it's my perennial costume, but when I go out for the Halloween party at Councilmember Clay's house, I will be what I've been for as long as I can remember in Tacoma Park. I always go as a speed bump. I just wanted to note that 7610 Maple Avenue is gonna have its grand reopening, grand celebration of its, the great job that Montgomery Housing Partnership has done on turning around that building, doing basically a gut job in renovation, and that ceremony is gonna be on November 16th. And I'm gonna have the opportunity to go through that building one afternoon this week with a representative from Montgomery Housing Partnership, and I'm sure that the results will be outstanding. And they've managed to excavate the front of the building and provide ADAA-accessible units on the bottom two floors in what had been a parking garage, so it's gonna be quite the outstanding building. And the other thing I just wanted to note was that both Councilmember Siemens and I were happy to attend the first in the series of four Friday evenings of the new chamber music series in this auditorium, and that was very nice. There were about 40 people here, and I know that they're hoping that more people will come and that they'll be able to extend that series. It was this past Friday night. It'll be each of the next two Friday nights. It'll skip a week, and then it'll be the fourth one on the following Friday night. So, for anybody who likes chamber music, it's a real good opportunity to hear it in We'll then go to the city manager's comments.
Well, the city manager is L., and I have no other comments.
Okay. Thank you to the deputy city manager for being here to fill in. Next item is adoption of minutes, and we have the forest minutes for March 22nd, March 28th, April 4th, April 11th, April 14th, April 18th, and April 20th. Would somebody like to move adoption of the minutes?
Move.
All right. I'll let the clerk figure that out. Any corrections or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting those sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and that passes unanimously. Next, we will go to the mayoral proclamation, and we have a number of people with us here this evening who are interested in that and wanna talk about it, and this was brought to my attention by a couple of folks, among whom is former city council member Rena Aldrighetti. And I'm sure that you can maybe introduce everybody who's here, but let me first read the proclamation, because I think it's important for the community to understand the importance of Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month. "Whereas the health of our community's people is the foundation for a caring and productive society, and our future rests with our ability to adequately treat and ultimately find cures for individuals who are afflicted with a variety of illnesses, including pulmonary hypertension. And whereas pulmonary hypertension is a rare disorder causing intolerable blood pressure levels in the arteries between the lungs and heart, and whereas in 2001, there were 3,000 patients receiving treatment from 100 treating physicians, and in just five years, those numbers had grown to an estimated 30,000 patients and 3,000 treating physicians. And whereas there are at least as many undiagnosed as diagnosed patients, and whereas without treatment, PH patients live in an average of 2.8 years past diagnosis, with early diagnosis and effective treatment, the disorder can be managed for 20 years or more. And whereas education can help with early diagnosis and funding for research can help find a cure, and whereas the Pulmonary Hypertension Association is a nonprofit organization that seeks to prevent and cure pulmonary hypertension and to provide hope for the PH community through support, education, advocacy, and awareness, now therefore, I, Bruce R. Williams, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, to hereby proclaim November 2011 to be Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of the City of Tacoma Park to recognize the seriousness of this disease and the meritorious work of the Pulmonary Hypertension Association to find a cure." And so, if you all wanna come up and make some comments- And so, uh, if, if you all want to come up and make some comments, um, that would be very helpful.
Hi. I'm Debbie Castro. This is my sister Alex. She's a Tacoma Park resident and, um, I work at the Pulmonary Hypertension Association and, um, Alex is caregiver. Rena Aldergetty, who you mentioned is the president of the organization. We are just down the road and we have a staff of 39. Um, and Sophie Klein is our associate of volunteer services and Chandra is in our patient services. So a, a lot of our staff members have come to thank you and show appreciation for proclaiming, um, or for the proclamation of, uh, November as Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month. Pulmonary hypertension is a rare and terminal heart and lung disease, and when my sister was diagnosed in 1998, they told her that she would not see her 30th birthday. Um, how old are you now?
That was 13 years ago.
That was 13 years ago. Can add it up. Um, that was 13 years ago and, um, at the time she had three very, very young children. Um, and when you're told that you only have two years to live, a lot goes through your mind with those three daughters that she had. She would never see them, uh, go to prom. She'd never see them graduate high school. She'd never see them have children of their own. And she's actually a grandmother now. Her daughter had a baby and, um, her, her daughter actually went to Tacoma Park Middle School at one point. Um, so, uh, we're very happy and, and appreciative of the, um, support that you have given, um, for Awareness Month. And the purpose of Awareness Month is so that we can get members of our, our small disease community to raise awareness to the larger public. So we appreciate this and we are doing, in the entire month of November, orchestrated activities in cities, um, and proclamations, not only through cities, but through states and, um, in regions. So we're basically trying to raise awareness and Alex is going to go to the local Tacoma Park Papers and the Silver Spring Papers and try to raise awareness that way to educate people, because pulmonary hypertension is a disease that is underdiagnosed, it's misdiagnosed. She had 13 misdiagnoses. Um, they told her it was asthma, allergies. She's going crazy. She's getting old. She needs to exercise. All of these things made her worse. And the longer you wait, the worse your heart becomes, um, and the less likely you are, your survivability, um, decreases over time. So, uh, thanks to the work of the Pulmonary Hypertension Association, I, I, having a sister with PH and working at the organization, I'm aware that, um, this organization has really fought for her life, has fought for more treatments, and this proclamation is going to help others understand the disease, get diagnosed earlier, and help us in the fight for a cure for pulmonary hypertension. So thank you so much on behalf of all of us.
And, yeah, and then, and then I've got a proclamation that I can present. So finish your comments and then everybody come up on stage and we'll do that.
I just, uh, I just want to add my thanks, Bruce, for getting, getting this on the agenda so quickly. There are 7,000 rare diseases in the United States and, uh, a rare disease is defined as, uh, having under 200,000 diagnosed patients. This is a disease, as Debbie said, uh, with 20 to 30,000 patients and, uh, a disease that had until 1996, no treatments. Uh, in 2001, its second and third treatments were approved. It now has nine treatments. It has more treatments than all but, uh, two of the 7,000 rare diseases. And that really has happened because, uh, patients, family members, and medical professionals are working, uh, are working, uh, very hard and working together with each other in very unusual ways to, um, to make things better for those, uh, who are diagnosed with the disease. As, as Debbie said, it's, it's a difficult disease to get a diagnosis, because it takes out a right heart cap, uh, to, to do this. And so, uh, anything that we can do to, to help get the word out about the disease is, is greatly appreciated and our thanks to all of you.
Sure. Anybody else want to comment on this? Okay, well then, anybody who wants to come up and receive the proclamation?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. On hand, on it. Doing a video?
Doing a video.
Doing films.
Going all over Twitter.
You're going global, Bruce.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Uh, we will now go to the first item on our regular meeting agenda, which is a resolution requesting state approval of a sustainable community plan and requesting designation as a sustainable community. Um, somebody want to just kind of give us an update on that, if there is one? Um, I guess there's, it's now going to be, uh, falling under the county's umbrella?
Hi. Two weeks ago, when we initially presented this concept to the council, um, our intent was to submit a separate des, application for the designation of Tacoma Park in its entirety and then some of the adjoining, um, areas in Prince George's and Montgomery County as a sustainable communities. In the subsequent, um, two weeks, we've had conversations with Montgomery County and there's a proposal out there now to submit a single application that would include the city of Tacoma Park and other areas within Montgomery County, um, primarily its priority areas, which are basically, uh, some of the major transportation routes. And then we, so, I'm sorry. What we're proposing, what has been proposed and which we support is the inclusion of Tacoma Park in a single application by Montgomery County. If successful in that, um, application, the city would be designated as a community area as well as the parts of the, um, our region that we're interested in furthering revitalization in, and it would allow us to apply for funding through a variety of programs, most notably the Community Legacy, um, program, which, uh, the state offers on an annual basis, as well as accessing funding through the State Highway Administration. We have been in contact with Prince George's County to see if they would remain interested in joining us in this application, given that it would be under the auspices of Montgomery County and not just the city of Tacoma Park, and they're supportive of that and are working with their county council to get the required authorizations needed to submit a complete application. So what we have before you this evening is a modified resolution, which addresses the, um, interest in becoming a part of a larger application for a designation as a sustainable communities. Montgomery County would take the lead on it, and if successful in that, um, designation process, the city would then be in, uh, allowed to submit applications on its own behalf for programs that would be limited to sustain, sustainable communities. If you were to submit an application for a project that you thought was, um, needed funding, you would be able to do that separate from Montgomery County. You would not have to go through the, the county to get authorization to submit the application. You could just do it separately as Tacoma Park, as you have done in the past. It would just, um, this step would save you staff time and would include those areas of the county that we've already expressed an interest in incorporating within our initial application.
So this is, the advantage is it's an umbrella, uh, designation, but it doesn't come with disadvantages in terms of how we might have to go through the county to get potential funding?
Correct. The other advantage, I think, is that it sort of reinforces at the county level the importance of participating in activities that might be initiated by the, um, the city of Tacoma Park and also working in partnership with Prince George's County, particularly in the Crossroads Sector Plan area and along New Hampshire Avenue corridor.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Schultz.
Resolution.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Councilmember Schultz.
Um, in the previous iteration, uh, it was, we talked about this, I guess, was it last week, perhaps?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago. The, uh, when we were looking at just ourselves as a city, uh, one of the things that we were talking about was, was designing a, a, an application area that actually encroached into Prince George's County, s, s, along New Hampshire Avenue, uh, and in the crossroads area, so that those areas too would be eligible for this kind of, um, this, this, this kind of programming. So does, does this new strategy proposed by Montgomery County, obviate, are being able to do that, to reach into Prince George's County and, and help those areas also?
Um, the revised plan or designated area, um, would include all of the parts of the community that we initially proposed, as well as our larger portions of Montgomery County. That was not the county's original intent, we start, when we started this conversation, but they've agreed that it would be appropriate to include those areas, given the, um, multi-jurisdictional aspect of it. We have agreed to take the lead in terms of securing those agreements or authorizations and are in process now in terms of working with Will Campus, Councilmember Campos's office, as well as Park and Planning in Prince George's County, um, to secure those approvals.
So do we move Prince George's County and it's, on its own behalf, is doing independently from Montgomery County, things for its part of the, its effort under the sustainability, uh, program?
Not, not for the area that we're talking about.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any public comments on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is the second meeting ordinance authorizing installation of traffic calming measures on Hilltop Road. Somebody want to introduce it?
I'd like to.
Yes.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Comments on this item? We've talked about it at first reading. Any public comment?
I just would take any questions. Um, you've had this before you several times, in addition to last October. We've originally had a public hearing in May. It came as a result of Gosepi Semino and neighborhood residents on Hilltop Road interested in, um, a traffic calming proposal on that street. Um, the planning office has been undertaking a sidewalk planning process through the safe routes to schools, so we're going to dovetail those projects together and anticipate a spring construction. This is just formalizing your approval and, uh, enabling us to have the funds available in the spring when we want to get started.
Good evening, folks. I just want to take a minute to say thank you to the mayor, uh, city clerk, for your, uh, counsel and time, uh, early on in the process. I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Snipper for, uh, providing representation and, uh, support throughout this. Also want to thank the deputy city manager, public works director, senior planner and engineer, for the time spent, uh, out on the street, um, looking and, uh, coming up with the right, uh, approach to this. And I wanted to thank the rest of the council for your time, your support, and debate, uh, to make this come to fruition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lovelace?
My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, the East Allegra. When you put in the traffic calming measures, I'd like to, uh, ask you people to, uh, take into mind people's backs and vertebrae, because some of those speed bumps are really rough on us. And also some of the roads, you know, has these, still have these potholes and stuff in them and cracks and stuff that are hard on us. So I'd like to have you, uh, take into mind on, uh, stuff like that. And also, Mayor, when you dress up as a speed bump, please be careful of my back. Remember that? Okay.
We'll do.
Thank you very much, but, as I said, please take it into very serious account, the, uh, the fact that some of these speeds bumps and stuff have on our backs, especially in the wind tunnel. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Uh, this is the second reading ordinance, so the clerk will need to call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Councilmember Robinson.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Any late ones who want to answer?
Aye.
All right.
Unanimously.
Um, so that is passed unanimously. Then, the next item on our agenda is the second meeting ordinance appointing judges for the 2011 city elections.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Clerk, want to provide any details on any changes?
Um, two names have been added to the, uh, list of judges recommended for service for the election and, um...
So we now have a full complement?
Yes, uh, we think so. The board may, um, the, the way the code reads, the mayor could appoint additional judges if, if they're found to be necessary. And so as we approach and, and go through the training for judges, it is possible that one or two more people may be needed.
Okay.
It is possible.
Remove this?
Councilmember Wright.
Okay, okay. Um, any comments on this? Any public comments? Well, clerk, please call a roll.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Passes unanimously. Uh, next item is the second meeting ordinance authorizing FY12 budget amendment number one.
I would just like to make one comment that...
Okay, just, it's been moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Deputy city manager.
Thank you. Uh, apparently last week, the city manager mentioned that there might be a change. There's no change.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Any comments from the public?
Yeah, just one.
Councilmember Schultz.
Just one question. Is this, uh, document basically identical to the one at first reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next item is the second meeting ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 2.12, Administrative Regulations.
Moved.
That's my second.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Any comments? We had a discussion about this at first reading. Any public comments? Seeing none, will clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We now have a consent agenda consisting of six items, um, four single reading ordinances, uh, awarding a contract for a replacement tub grinder, a contract for an asphalt miller paver, purchase of police protective equipment, a contract for a photocopier lease, and we have a resolution for claiming November as Municipal Government Works Month and a resolution providing for appointments to the Recreation Committee. Oops, and we have two more, uh, also for appointments to emergency preparedness and, uh, authorizing agreement with the Crossroads Community Food Network, formerly Crossroads Farmer's Market. Would somebody like to move consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Clay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Oh, sorry, sorry. Call, call again.
Mayor Williams.
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. I was on a roll, I just wanted to keep going. Um, we'll take a, we'll take a short break and we'll come back for our work session discussion of three items, uh, starting with Recreation Services and ending with the added agenda item. And if anybody wants to see a picture of the miller paver that we just authorized, I printed out the spec sheet with pictures. Ten minutes for everything, since he has jet lag. We'll see how well that holds. The next item is a discussion of the vision for Recreation Services. Uh, let me just get through the, all of these items here, so I can get back to that one in the stack, getting through all those consent agenda items. There we go. And what... And what I suggested that we do last week, and we did, was that I would get together with the chair, vice chair of the Recreation Committee, and that we would have edits to the council by Wednesday. We did. We had them out Wednesday morning. We conferred at, like, 9:30 on Tuesday night and worked until it was finished. And then, the council had a chance to make some additional comments, and those changes were incorporated by the vice chair, who has left town after she made those edits so that she can't be blamed, and left the poor chair in her stead. And so, hopefully, this incorporates the changes that we talked about last week, and any comments that council members had in the intervening time between midday Wednesday and midday Friday. And does the chair of the Recreation Committee want to make any comments?
Well, just open to comments. I hope we captured most of what the council wanted and suggestions they made, and as the mayor said, Cindy crafted this together quickly and sent it out, so...
Oh, and I also just wanted to say that what I meant to do last week was that one resident was here and had comments, a public comment, and had provided some additional, had provided written comments, which we had copies of as we were talking about this. And I had wanted last week to invite Wayne Sherwood to make any comments that he wanted to. I neglected to do so. I'm sorry about that. And he provided additional comments this week as well, which we all have at our place. And my sense was that, in looking at his comments, that both of the points that he wanted to make in terms of his summary of recommendations for inclusion in the mission statement are included. Councilmember Clay.
Thank you again for all the work that you did on this. I got to provide my comments, and they've been incorporated here. And I have one additional comment, and it's around the desired goals, outcomes, and measures what we provide. It says, "Develop specific participant and community goals," which is great, so we have participant goals, we have community impact goals, "outcomes and measures with support of the Recreation Committee, input of other community members and councils." "Desired participant outcomes may be more specific and include such outcomes as participants enjoy the program or gain specific skills. Community outcomes may involve more community input to develop." So, I think we already said in the first sentence that we would, the next council essentially will be developing both the participant and the community goals with support of the Recreation Committee and other community members. It's kind of redundant to come back and say, "Community outcomes may involve more community input to develop." I think that what that says to me is I'm not quite sure what a community output is. And so, since we gave, to make it more parallel, we gave a specific example of a participant outcome, which would be they enjoy the program, or they gain specific skills. Community outcomes might be related to community health, or they might be related to crime reduction, or, you know, what are the community impacts that we have? We have more community gardens because we have more volunteers who work in them. So, the things that aren't specific to the participant are the things that accrue to the community because we have a good recreation program. So, we have fewer incidents of latchkey kids, or, you know, things related to that. So, that wouldn't be maybe specific to a program. You couldn't tag it to a program participant, but it's an outcome that the community achieves because we have a good recreation program, or because of things that the recreation program does.
So, is that particular language that you want, or is that just direction for how things get developed?
The particular thing that I would do language-wise is I would remove the sentence that, or remove at least the part, either remove the whole sentence, or remove the part of it that says, "may involve more community input to develop," and just say, "community outcomes may involve increase..." Here are the things that are there. Increase volunteerism, a more cohesive and neighborly community, breakdown of social, economic, and cultural barriers. Those are like beyond an individual participant...
Drop the sentence.
I'm sorry?
Drop the sentence. It is your right, it's right in the next paragraph.
Yeah, so, I mean, the question is, do you need, if you're going to explain participant outcomes, do you also need to explain community outcomes? If you do, then you need to have parallel construction in the paragraph. Maybe Ruby can help me out here. If you don't care about that, you can just cut the sentence. And I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, other than that I don't want it to say, "may involve more community input to develop."
I'm happy with dropping the sentence.
Yeah. Dropping the sentence.
Okay.
That's my only comment.
Everybody sees that? It's the top of page two under desired goals. The last sentence in the first paragraph is dropped unless somebody really wants to keep it there and do the parallel construction. Councilmember Wright.
I just want to say, I think this is great. I think we've made great progress. Thanks so much for moving this, what I think is, you know, across the final goal line. I particularly like one edit I think is new, which is the sentence that says, "The majority of resources should be directed to youth and experienced residents." I particularly like the use of experienced residents. It's very PC and very Tumon Park, so I thank you for that.
First thing to we serve.
And I like also that acknowledging that the details around desired goals and outcomes, while there is some stuff here that's suggestive, is not exhaustive, and provides both Recreation Department staff and the new Recreation Director, whoever that might be, some ability to shape and add to that. But I think it does give a good high-level perspective on what we want, and is also, I think, would be particularly helpful to the city manager if she tries to identify a new Recreation Director and thinks about people who have deep experience in things like an integrated service delivery model, heavy use of volunteerism, the use of community assets, and assessment of what the community's assets are and what the community's needs are. So, thanks a lot. I'm ready to give the thumbs up on this.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. In the mission statement part of it, in the second line, you have a which. The correct word is "that," I believe. The correct word is "that." And I would love to see something about fun, or playful, or even recreation in there. You know, emphasize.
It does say emphasize. It doesn't say...
Yeah, well, I mean, having fun seems like a...
I don't know. It's awfully risky to make.
All right. I'll back off here.
Hold your, hold in the process again.
Just...
We could put "fun" in there.
Or, I don't know, even, you know, recreation or something. Anyway, you get the idea. I mean, I...
Pick a spot. Where are the words you go in?
You know, I worked in recreation, and we had a lot of fun.
While occasionally having fun?
Well, if you took out the, if you did citizen involvement, comma, and then took out the "and" and made the "and" at the end of the sentence, and had some fun doing these things.
I like putting "fun" at the end. It gives a little punch.
Yeah.
So, citizen involvement, integration of different cultural and economic communities, and fun.
Yeah. Even as simple as that.
Thank you all for putting this together. I didn't do much on it, but I really think it's a service to citizens in the next council because we've been talking about this for years, and you did a lot of work. I have one tiny typo in the integrated service model figure, and it rhymes with "fun." It's "run," but you have "rung," R-U-N-G. It's in the...
Help run cable channel.
Help run cable channel, so just take out the G.
Well, you know, the loud...
It's a little graphic, so I'll send you that.
The great challenge on this is that Cindy's, who did much of the editing on this and did a great job with this, her laptop somehow defaulted into Spanish-language dictionary. And so, for almost all the notes she sends to us, we keep looking, "Okay, what is this? Recreacion?" And then, we had to convert it to the mayor's use of WordPerfect, which was a big challenge there, too, so...
Does that program still exist? Is it by support for it?
I have WordPerfect, I have Word, I can do PDFs. But frankly, WordPerfect is still the best program. We gave them sufficient...
Only because you can see the code so easily.
Yes, that, and you can open a PDF and save as a PDF, native in the program.
I can do that with my current edition of Microsoft Word.
The newest version.
Well, I'm glad Microsoft Word is finally catching up to the 21st century. Councilmember Schultz.
Save us.
It sounds like we're having too much fun up here right now.
We're having fun.
I see that the request for various changes that I included, which were mostly focused on wordsmithing, have all been pretty much included, so I'm pleased with the final product here. And I'm also pleased that the work of this committee and the council is just a wonderful example of showing how, if we use our committees in a sensible, productive way, that they can be very, very strengthening to the city government, to the city council, and to the residents. Because the Recreation Committee has played a critical role in this process. We just simply could not have got to this goal line at this date without the Recreation Committee's extraordinarily input. So, I thank the Recreation Committee and their members, but I also, you know, commend this model to our other council-appointed committees, to the extent that it's appropriate.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to take a moment and extend what Councilmember Schultz just said. I'd like to thank the city staff, and the Recreation Committee, and my colleagues here on the council. I think that what we saw here was, at times, kind of ugly sausage-making, but I think we've come out with a good product. And I think, more importantly, we've learned how to make sausage, and so, hopefully, we can use this approach again in the future, and continue to improve the way we develop policies and the way that we collaborate with staff and our advisory committees to better serve the community. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds like we have a vision for recreation services, and we have a way to proceed forward. And I hope this will be helpful to the community, to the Recreation Committee, to the Recreation Staff, to the city manager as she proceeds with what she needs to do to get a new Recreation Director. And I hope that the next city council will take under advisement some of the lessons from this process.
The good lessons.
The good lessons, and have something that the whole community can work with as we go forward. So, we've got final language, and we don't need to do anything formal with that. We've got it, we agree with it. Thank you all very much. Yes, Jack?
One thing, I just want to, again, praise the staff has been very helpful to the committee in this whole process. And Greg, and Eric, and Lou, and all the rest have been very helpful, giving us information. We had a great meeting with them this summer, the entire staff, just to kind of talk about their views on things. And I think the relationship between the committee and the staff has really evolved in a very, very positive manner, so I'm very pleased with this, and I think the committee is, too. And I'm excited by the fact that I think we have maybe three or four new committee people to be approved tonight, so there's kind of fresh blood coming into the committee and enthusiasm there. So, it's been a great, a really fun committee to get together with on a monthly basis, so I've enjoyed that.
Jake, I've been going around door-knocking, which is part of the campaign, and I've met another Word4 gentleman who's very interested and has lots of good ideas for recreation in the city, and talked about some of the new things that we've included in this plan, so I'll be forwarding his name to you soon.
Please do. That'd be great, yeah.
All right. Thank you all. Next item is the city manager's quarterly staff activity report and quarterly financial report.
You've got another nice fat package in front of you on this agenda item. One of the things, I'll just make a note personally, I get to help proof this each quarter, and it's actually very fun to learn about all the different activities that we do. I never know everything we do, and so, I do hope that you take a few minutes and read through the reports from the various entities. In terms of the financial report, this financial report essentially compares the finances from this first quarter of fiscal year 2012 with the first quarter of fiscal year 2011. And there were a couple of things that just stood out a little bit. One of the difference has to be, that you'll notice, is that we had had one more payroll this year than last year, so that changes the numbers within that quarter. So, it changes the numbers a little bit. And of course, the cost for the public works facility is a major factor in the difference. The city manager has said, she was going to try to get to you some detailed financial information about the public works project. She will get that to you this week by email. I don't know if you have any questions about any of this, but it's fairly straightforward. Things that seem to be different are highlighted.
I had just, I guess, maybe one question that you may or may not know an answer to on the numbers, on the financial part, where it says that the income tax receipts were $42,000 unchanged, less than the prior year. Do we know if that is a trend, or just maybe a timing issue, or any ideas on that?
No, we don't know. I'll find out if we've gotten any hints that there's a thought that it's a trend. Income taxes are the most unpredictable element, it seems, and so, it's something we watch, but until we get another, my guess is until we get a little bit further into the year, we're not going to know if it's a trend or not.
And I did notice that on the revenues from charges for services, that the variance was primarily an increase in revenues generated from recreation programs of about $37,000.
Right.
And I had two questions from all of the other information behind the financial information. Again, you may or may not know the answer, but there was one part where it noted that the Public Works Director was part of a meeting with WSSC, kind of looking at how the potential for the gray water system. And I didn't know if we had any additional word on that, if we have a sense of whether that may become operative or not.
I don't know that. I'll find out.
And the, do we have any sense of the timing on the solar panel installation on city roofs?
I'll check on that as well. That, I think, is pretty soon, but I'll have to send out the information.
Okay. If we can just get, you know, an email update with any answers on this, that would be helpful. Other questions? Councilmember Wright.
I just have a question. I noticed that there's, it sounds like there's a number of complaints at the Hampshire Towers related to an issue we dealt with before. related to an issue we dealt with before when we were in the council, and actually looked at kind of a slight change in the policy on this around the amount of hours noticed and when you have to go into an apartment to do inspections or repairs, and if the repairs were conducted and then go to the tenants. And I'm wondering, one of the things that's hard with this report is, we'd have to go back and see, you know, look over time, has this been an ongoing problem? So I'm sort of curious about whether this is like a pattern of behavior by the management company at Hampshire Towers over the past, and then if so, is there some more kind of strategic discussion we can have with them about it? And if it's not a pattern, can we just be aware as we see the next report or this continues on, to see if it crops up again?
I will check with Sarah Daines on that, and then alert them that that'd be useful to follow up on the next time.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? We thank the city manager for compiling this report, and thank deputy city manager for making a small list of requests for additional information. Then we will move to our final item, which was the agenda item that I added at the beginning, having to do with Councilmember Clay's request for phone reimbursement, whether a policy was needed or whether that could just happen. And I guess there was a little back and forth about this, and trying to kind of get our minds around this to understand what might, excuse me, what might be involved. And the deputy city manager put together something that has a couple options that might help guide whatever we might want to do. Maybe I could ask Councilmember Clay to just kind of recap where this came from and what Everybody's taking a chance to read these couple items.
Want to summarize?
No, there's two options for no council action required, there's two options for possible council action that are tied to future budget amendments required. I was hoping maybe Councilmember Clay could just kind of give a little background on where this came from or how it came about.
Sure.
And just, maybe I'll just note that what happened was that a couple of councils ago, there was a policy that was put into place with the budget for the FY 2008 budget that basically put in a line item so that council members could get city cell phones slash-
The line item was communications.
That's right, that's right.
It was $10,000 for communications. And among the things that we discussed that people could get reimbursed for were cell phones, we even, I think Councilmember Siemens asked about, he said he didn't really use the cellphone that much, he asked about newsletters and things like that. So it was, in the end, it was a line item for council communication support.
Right.
So in 2007, before, I think Dan, Josh, and Fred were elected to the council, back when the council stipend was $6,000 a year and not the $10,000 that it is now, there was a conversation that, I think actually I initiated, about support for cell phones and particularly PDAs. And at the time, I had a personal cellphone that I think costs like $30 a month. And the reason why I made the request initially is because I worked in a work environment where I couldn't, I couldn't access Yahoo Groups and the city's email services because it was restricted. And what was happening was that there was a lot of communication in decision-making that was going on via email that I was not able to participate in because I couldn't get access to it unless I paid a lot more money for a PDA that had access. And so it seemed reasonable to me that since these costs would accrue because of the work on the council, that the city would pay for them. They already paid for cell phones for a lot of the staff and other people who were also participating in the conversation, and so the council at the time agreed that we would create a part of the budget that was $10,000 at the time, that would be a little bit more than $1,000 a month per council, I'm sorry, $100 a month per council member for communication costs. And so that was fine, except that the city's communications office said that they didn't have any PDAs, and that they didn't do that. And so if I wanted that, that I would have to get my own and get reimbursed for it. And so I did that, and I used my, I got a discount, an 18% discount on what the regular cost was, and I bought the device, and then the city was going to assume it, but they, I had set up, the phone number that I had now, I had set up as my, you know, council phone when I got elected in 2005, and so they were going to transfer the phone number, and it took them, I think, until, I think, February, what was it, I think it was like a year or 16 months, something like that, it was a long time, before they worked out all the details to actually get the, to get it transferred and the city to assume the payments. In the meantime, the other council members were all offered cell phones, and those who wanted them were able to get them, and the city paid for 100% of their costs for their cellphone. And so I was told by the city manager that it would be no problem, that they just submit the bills, and they would reimburse me for the cost of my phone in the months from the time that the resolution or whatever it was was passed, until the city assumed costs. And so I did that, and I wrote to Verizon, and I got the list of all of the, all the costs, and by that time it was something like $1,600 or so worth of, $1,800, something like that, worth of phone costs. And then I didn't get paid, I didn't get paid, and then it was, well, you know, I have them, I'll find them somewhere, and then they didn't get found, and then I talked to the mayor about it, and then I ordered the stuff again, and it's just gone on and on and on, and now I'm leaving, and I'm like, you know, I would really like you to pay me for this, reimburse me for the cost of the PDA. In the same way that other people got, you know, the city paid for 100% of the cost of anybody's PDA who wanted the PDA, plus the PDA. And when I got a new PDA with the city, the city kept my old PDA, and it went back into the cycle, which was reasonable to me because they were going to reimburse me for it. And so I suggested two things. I thought the easiest thing to do at this point would be to pay me for the monthly cost of the PDA phone and leave me with this Thunderbolt phone that I have now, and the city manager says, well, they can't do that. But the fact is, I've cycled through two phones, and while they kept my first phone, which was the one that I bought and used it for other things, they left me with that crazy old BlackBerry Storm, which used to be actually Suzanne Mudlow's phone at one point, which I still have sitting on my desk at home.
You just got a Storm?
Yeah, if this, yeah, I did, I got a Storm. And also, the other one was one of those Palm OS things. Anyway, and so I felt like the easiest thing would be just leave me with this phone that I have now. I've had it, it's got scratches on the cover, and pay me just for the cost of the other things, but the city doesn't want to do that, so I think the alternative is to pay me for the original phone, which, by the way, is actually much more money because that original phone costs like $550, and I think the city probably paid less than $200 for the phone that there is now, and the monthly cost of the bill. Now, my monthly cost, what I paid for the PDA was $88 a month for the phone and the service.
So to me, I don't think we need to change the overall policy in order to reimburse Councilmember Clay in this situation. You know, to me, it's sort of like we gave people the choice. If, when Colleen had been in the situation at the beginning, she had the same choice that I had when I joined the council, she would have taken the PDA, got her number transferred like I got my number transferred, and then been off and running. And for a variety of reasons, that didn't occur, and she incurred costs to basically pay for the equivalent function. And I think we should just reimburse her for the cost of the original device, since we're not allowing her to keep the current device, and pay for the bill, and be done with it and go home because Ruben is jet-lagged. And we don't have to change the underlying rules about what people can be reimbursed for. If the next council wants to change the rules about, you know, newsletters, or just giving council members, if they don't take the city phone, some flat payment for the communication device they want, that's their choice. But I view it as something occurred in the past, this workaround was developed because the city had some technological issues, couldn't get it worked out, and we should just solve the problem by reimbursing Councilmember Clay in this situation. Which I think is different than someone saying, sorry, I don't want a phone that the city's giving me, I'm just going to use my own phone, and then that I already have, you know, what is called a feature phone, and then to come back later and say, hey, I want to get reimbursed. I think that's a different situation.
Councilmember Robinson.
Colleen, wasn't your personal phone number that you wanted to transfer to the city account, is that what you were trying to do?
Right, because when I became a council member, I got the council, the number they have now, the 422-1830, and I published it, and it was on my cards, and it was on all my stuff, and so I didn't want to, I didn't want to change the phone number that all my constituents had.
I see. I had the same number for many years, and I still have it, and I use my personal phone. And I think my only, my comment on this would be, if you want a phone for city business, get a number for city business, and don't merge your number. I had a Storm, too, and I sent it back because it was so awful. I don't think I ever had a, I don't think I ever tried to move my own personal number to a city account, and I was walking around with two phones, which seemed appropriate to me, until I realized I didn't really want two phones, I wanted one, and then I stayed with my personal number being my number that I used for all calls, including constituent calls. So I've, the one, the option here that says, you know, if you kicked over to a higher amount because of the number of constituent calls that you were handling, then you ought to be reimbursed for that, that sort of rings true. But I don't see this, I should be, I should have the right to move my personal number to the city and be covered under a city plan. That doesn't ring true to me at all. I think it's more, if you want a city phone and you want a city number, and then that's another discussion about, well, if there's a line item already, then let the city handle it. And I agree with Josh that this probably needs to be taken up by the next council, but I'm not, I'm not impressed or swayed by my personal number couldn't get transferred and therefore I want my money. That doesn't, that's not ringing my bell.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
It's not my personal number. I set it up as my city number in 2005. The reason why you were able to come onto the council and say, I would like to have a city number, is because of the work that I did before you came on the council to make sure that that was available.
Did you not have a phone? I thought you said that that was your phone number when you, when you-
From 2005, when I became a, when I became a council member. Before that, I had a 510 cellphone number.
So you had two phone numbers when you became, when you came on the council? Am I getting that right?
When I came on the council, I got a phone for council business, and that's the-
Was the second phone?
240-422-1830 phone.
Whatever the number is, did you have a personal number for your phone, and then you had another number for the-
Yeah.
For the city phone?
Yeah.
And so you're trying, you were opting to have a separate number for your city phone? But there was some glitch in that they, there was already a personal number and-
Well, they just couldn't transfer it. The reason why they were able to transfer Josh's is because they had figured it out by that point, because I sat and waited for that to get transferred over. That's why you guys had that success with that.
Right. Well, I've opted not to have a city phone because it was more hassle, more trouble than it was worth, and I've always been able to check my email in some way or another through some computer or another, so that's not persuasive to me either. So I'll vote against it, but I did not, don't take it personally, I just think it's-
Won't take it personally.
I think we're just, I think we can save, either save the city money and use our own phones for answering constituent calls, or if you feel there are that many constituent calls and you need a second phone, then, you know, that's another discussion, or, you know, take it out of the line item. I'd be more interested, I mean, kind of selfishly, if we're going to do some allotment for a phone, and people like me don't care to have a second phone or to use a city number, then, yeah, reimburse me for the money that I'm not counting costing the city, if we're to be all even Steven about it. So, I mean, it is a little bit complicated. I see that you, I'm appreciative of your groundbreaking efforts in trying to get this somewhere, although I don't particularly like the where it's gotten, so. But, you know, I'm not going to stretch it out and make a big stink, I'll just vote against it if it comes to that.
Councilmember Schuster.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Josh on this, because this is, as Councilmember Clay explained, this is a separate situation, since she had a number she was using for the city. So I support Councilmember Wright's suggestion that this is a kind of one-time reimbursement issue, and that if we want to change the policy a little bit under some of these options, we can have the new council figure that out.
Councilmember Schultz.
Listen, one of the things I think of is here is about the idea of putting it off to the next council. Wouldn't it be, I mean, if the next council is asked to do this, then they're more or less having to pass a resolution that voters might see as self-aggrandizing, sort of like saying, hey, now that I got elected, let's all give us a raise. Whereas you would normally say, no, you don't do that. If you're going to do a raise, it will apply to the next council that comes along, not yours, because that's, well, what I said. So I'm thinking we might be able to do the next council, and I may not even be on it, for all I know, a favor by trying to do something about it before this council adjourns, so that they don't have to deal with this, as something that's being a sort of a selfish action on their part. That's the only one comment. The other comment is that, you know, it's interesting, I mean, I have a, like yourself, Dan, I've used my own cellphone, sort of an old-fashioned thing, that one of these days this is absolutely going to die forever. But the billing that I get is, you know, the way I pay it, I don't get individual calls denoted on my bill, because if I did, it would go on for endless numbers of pages. And so some of these ideas here, like in the first top of the page, of enumerating the calls and sorting them by whether they were council business or not council business, it'd be utterly impossible to do that, because I'm talking to other people, and I can't remember whether I talked to somebody about city business or whether it was something totally different. So I, that idea just doesn't make any sense at all. And I'm not trying to take it- And I'm not trying to take a position here, Zach, in my comments at this moment with regard to Colleen's special case, but I do think it is a special case, it's sort of a one-off. And I don't know that we agree with Councilmember Wright, I don't know that we have to adopt, do anything of changing what we do. We can treat this as a special situation and just be done with it. But I'm also willing to think about whether or not we really ought to adopt a policy so that the future council doesn't, isn't put into an awkward position.
Let me, I think you still have something?
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say one or two things. I think it's, we're not really in a position to kind of have a policy discussion and do a, you know, potentially new policy for the next council for this because if we were gonna have to vote on it or, you know, it might potentially have budget implications, it would need to be a voting item that we would advertise. So I think Councilmember Clay is right that this is a, basically a one-off situation that I think just needs to be resolved. I don't think it has implications for other people. I think a, probably something that comes from this discussion that makes it a little clearer to folks in the future about how to deal with constituent and kind of job-related communications expenses for council members that weren't necessarily obvious in years past. I know when I first got on the council, I was the first person to show up with a cellphone. It was one of the old bag phones. And it was heavy in that first election. When I got elected, I kind of hid it under the table in a grocery bag because I didn't want anybody stealing it because it was a big brick. And people didn't do email and people didn't have cellphones and it was just, you know, if you had phone calls, they came at home. And that's how you did things and it might take a week to catch up with somebody. And the press of time now has made it so that it's evolved to where people expect an answer as soon as they raise the question and people need to check things during the day and having a smartphone to do that is much more a requirement of doing the job to the standards that constituents expect. Whether we agree with those expectations or not, that's what we're, that's what we've got. I think the, kind of the simplest way to approach it that doesn't take any policy change for anybody who wants to continue to use their cellphone is to just, if, you know, if it's a monthly cost and the minutes that you've been supplying for yourself are just fine, but then the minutes go up because of the constituent service, you know, if there's an overage to reimburse that or maybe, or also, also, but you don't, but I could even see saying, you know, gee, it was, you know, here's the pattern, it was X, now I have this and I've either had to raise the number of minutes per month to accommodate that in a plan rather than getting overage, or gee, there were a couple of months where it became obvious that I was having overage, I didn't, and now I need to change the plan. So whatever that incremental cost is, that's just a suggestion for that type of change. What I found most helpful was to get the city phone, to have it billed through the city, that way you get the pool of minutes and if you don't use them, they go to the rest of the people in the pool and that's very helpful to the city. And I find it helpful that when I have city business that I can put onto the city phone, it just works much better that way. I carry two phones, I don't always carry two phones, but many times when I know I'm gonna need it, I'll use the second phone and it just makes it a whole lot easier. And it's one of those things that, in a simplified life, I would only carry one, but I've got this job and another job and a personal life and it requires more than one phone. But I think in this case that there was a transitional period in trying to make things happen and I appreciate Councilmember Clay's situation and I think that if there's just a reasonable reimbursement on this, that that would be the way to go.
If I'm right, there, some of the things, I've not been closely in the loop on this, but the description that Councilmember Clay gave has had some more information I think would be useful, so appreciate that. We can take that back.
Councilmember Wright.
So I just wanted to say, again, I think this is, we don't need a policy change and I think it's under, it's well under a $10,000 expenditure, so the city manager could just...
It's under $2,000.
Right, could deal with it without any vote from the council. As a matter of course, if she wanted, cover to make sure the council knew about it, we could, we could take a kind of thumbs on the camera, thumb up vote or thumb down vote. I did want to comment on two other things. One is I appreciate Fred's effort to reduce future council situation where they may seem to be having some self-benefit and I'm very hopeful that you will be on the council again, Fred.
Thank you.
But I think this is a little bit different because it would be, I think it's a little bit hard for us to predict what would be helpful to the council, right? So this isn't, this shouldn't be viewed as compensation, but a tool for council members to do their job well. And so there could be up to three different, there will be three different council members, at least three different council members on the, on the dais and they might want to make the case that they do have a newsletter or you, Fred, might want to be able to make the case in the future that you might be able to use some other vehicle more effectively to reach out to the constituents. I know you've had, it's been a challenge to reach and engage with, right? And maybe there should be some...
It has, it is always a challenge.
Right. So I think that should be really left to the next council. On the number portability issue, since this is something that doesn't cost the city anything, it should be easy for a council member to say, hey, I would like my city phone to have this number that I've talked about in the campaign or that is my existing personal number, it doesn't cost the city anything and in many cases, it makes it a lot easier for council members. If I didn't, if I wasn't able to do the portability on my city phone, I would actually have three phones now because I would have my personal phone, which had my existing number, which everybody, the large number of friends I know have. I would have my city phone and I would have the treasury phone that they require you to have, right? So that would get, it's bad enough being like the mayor having to carry two phones, but if you couldn't do number portability, which costs nothing to the city, I'd be walking around with three phones.
Right.
And that's how I really think I was self-important.
You could have them clipped to your jacket so you just look really, yeah, like you're really, get a special belt for them.
That goes inside your jacket.
Oh, okay.
And then it bulges.
I don't know the etiquette on that, but...
I think, I mean, is there, do you want to say anything else or you pretty much decided that we'll just go back and look at the numbers?
It sounds like there's general agreement on the council that this is a one-off case, that we don't want to change policy and that if this can be worked out in a way that is fair and reasonable, that that's the way to go.
I think we need to be specific. I think we need to specifically say that they're gonna reimburse me for the cost of my phone and my monthly bill.
Because you don't, you will not, you bought the phone originally and you will not be ending up with a phone.
Right. I had to turn in my phone to them when I got this, then got the city phone, the city got, the city ended up with my phone.
Right.
And so I'd like to be specific so that we don't have to come back to this again, that they will reimburse me for the cost of my original phone or they can leave me with this phone that I have, I don't care. And that they will pay me the monthly cost of my bill for the time period from when we passed the resolution until they assumed the bill.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Do we have thumbs up, thumbs down on that one? We have, we have, we have four thumbs up and two thumbs down. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And that takes care of our agenda for this evening. I'll see many of you at the legislative conference and see everybody around town and we will next meet here as this body on Wednesday, November 9th, the evening after the election where we need to certify the results. Don't forget that Wednesday evening meeting.
Right.
We're adjourned.